Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, June 5th, 2018. We have a full quorum of all seven Planning Commissioners in attendance. We're grateful for your attendance and hope that you feel welcome and enjoy the meeting this evening. The first item on our agenda is the consent calendar consisting of the minutes approval from May 15th, 2018. Commissioner Quinney?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Is there any discussion to the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. A business item this evening on our agenda is Brinkerhoff Bluffs, continued from April 17th, 2018. Seventy-six, fifty-three South, thirteen-hundred West, future land use map amendment for approximately ten point thirty-seven acres of property from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and rezone from RR point five D, rural residential half-acre minimum lots zone, to PRD M S H O, Planned Residential Development Medium Density Senior Housing Overlay Zone. Cannon and Company, Gary Cannon is the applicant. Please feel free to come forward and...
We don't need to do that.
Oh, that's, I'm in automatic mode, sorry. This is a business item, and so Mr. Page has more information for us from the city.
So, the last month or so, the applicant has met with city staff, and we've made some modifications from the previously presented concept plan where they've dropped one of the parcels just south of this area as proposed senior housing overlay, and then they've moved the line that you can see on the southwest portion of this parcel a little bit to the east. The staff has met with the city traffic engineer, one of the city engineers, and also with the fire department and the applicant to try to come up with a concept plan that could meet all of the city requirements for public safety. So you're very quite aware of the location of this site. Here's the previous conceptual plan, and the latest conceptual plan is shown before you, where they have, they're proposing forty-five total lots, seventeen of which will be single-family and twenty-eight will be senior housing overlay with a density of four point six units per acre under the Planned Residential Development Zone. If the city chooses to rezone this from rural residential to medium-density housing, that would, the minimum density that they would need to have would be three point one units per acre. They're proposing four point six, so in order to get up to four point six, they would need to go above and beyond standards such as fifteen percent open space. They would need to have greater open space or show additional amenities if it be architectural standards, or enhanced landscaping, or, you know, a part for the public, or, I guess, your, what other criteria the city would feel would be amendable for this additional Here's the contours which you've seen before and some photographs. I was on the site a few days ago, and I was surprised to see a good-sized young buck right along the natural stream that runs through the property. Boyd Brown is here, I guess representing Gary, and he might have any additional comments that he could provide to you or address any questions you might have. It's important to note that the fire department's okay with a crash gate off of Thirteenth West, just north of the private drive of Colossals, and then there'll be a proposed kind of a looped route interior to the property to adhere to the engineering standards. They've, originally they were proposing to have some senior housing overlay access directly off of Thirteen Hundred West. That was not recommended by our traffic engineer, so that has been dropped. So, staff's opinion is that this could be a good product for the city. Always the devil's in the details, but we would hope that we could still work through the detailed amenities with the Planning Commission and the City Council and the applicant to make this benefit for the city.
Great, thank you, Mr. Page. Any questions for city staff? All right, well, this was already held as a public hearing on April 11th, so let's discuss it now amongst the commissioners, and we'll see if we need to ask any additional questions. Commissioner Green.
The more that I've looked at this and looked at this, this is a bad project for the neighborhood. It might have some potential, but given the legal requirements of SHO and PRD requirements, don't think we can make it work. We talk about having the, do we have enough to have a good faith effort from the developer? And I'm going to tell you no, from my perspective. I can remember back in April specifically when we talked, and I'm going to get to some legal things here in a minute, but we specifically talked about the senior housing overlay, that it had to have a courtyard, some open space, yada, 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 that's specific to the senior housing overlay, and we've made no attempt to put those in here. When we have a concept plan, yes, it's a concept, and it's subject to some modifications, but it's clear from my perspective that the applicant has to have forty-five units to pencil this project out. I'm not here to worry about whether the developer can pencil the project out. I want to make sure that we meet the requirements of the code, and the first part of this is that senior housing overlay doesn't have a courtyard, doesn't have the connectivity, a couple other things that are required in one through five, or in thirteen-six H. And as far as, now the big thing. Well, the second thing is, we're doing townhomes, and you can see they're long and narrow, and we talked about those last time, and yes, they've made some modifications to those, but everything in a senior housing overlay requires that we have, for single-family and two-family units, requires a detached or attached two-car garage. Well, looking at these, I'm still trying to figure out how you put a two-car garage on the front of this house and still have it less than fifty percent the width of the house. It doesn't work with a rectangle the way it's drawn, and so I don't see how it works. Last but not least, and I think there's a couple other issues that we have with, that I have with this project, particularly, don't think I got a really good answer on if anything was thirty percent slope or not, and the overhead wire easement versus the drainage easement, but they came up with seventeen percent open space that I could live with. The difficulty that I have is that what we're taking is we have a PRD zone, and then, according to the ordinance, the SHO zone is an overlay on a zone piece of property. And the PRD, and that SHO has to meet the same criteria as the underlying development. And I don't think we can, I mean, and that's, that's pretty clear in the ordinance that it's the, and when we zone this, it's designated with a PRD-sho zone. So it's clear that there's an overlay zone that has to meet the same density requirements as the PRD. Therefore, instead of having this nine-unit property, what, or nine-acre, nine-point-eight-seven acre unit property that's a PRD, what we've got is a three-and-a-half, four-acre, whatever it might be, PRD zone, and then a PRD at a medium, and then we have a two- or three-acre, whatever these happen to be, PRD high-density zone. I can tell you, looking at, when we look at this, and this is something that the neighbors have said for a long time, is that, and I can tell you that in this neighborhood, we have a brunt of high-density in this neighborhood, with the Colosseum project on the corner, apartments down on the other corner, the Milky Way Drive, townhomes, within eight blocks of this, we got a whole slew of multifamily, high-density homes. I'm okay with medium density, but what that means is those town, in that zoning zone, in that SHO overlay zone, it has to be the same density as the rest of the, the rest of the PRD. In this particular case, we're talking about twenty-eight units. Twenty-eight units at five, I'm going to use a number that I can actually almost get right and not screw it up like I did in the pre-meeting. If we're doing five units per acre for twenty-eight units, those twin homes have to, you'd have to take five acres, over five acres of the project, plus another acre, almost twenty percent, another three-quarters of an acre for the open space. So, the senior housing overlay is going to take up six acres of this property, and on this concept plan, it does not. And so, this concept plan doesn't fit with the city ordinance. And I believe that as a planning commission, we have an obligation to follow city ordinance and make an unfavorable recommendation on this project, and if that means that the developer has to go back to the drawing board, then that means we go back to the drawing board. I think in this particular project, we either have to go all PRD, or we all go, we go all SHO. Trying to pick and choose to say, I want, I want to be able to use the two acres of open space on the north side to compensate for, that's outside of my overlay zone, to compensate for my high-density twin homes, we can't do that under ordinance, because that's what we're doing. If we do that, then the next applicant comes in and says, I want to build, I want to build three hundred feet from the city park, and you can count that as my open space and reduce my acreage. We're on a slippery slope if we don't enforce the ordinance and use the SHO with the same underlying zoning, because that's what we've done in the past, we've always done that. Every time somebody comes in, they, we do an R38, we do whatever, and the SHO zone matches it, and then we, on the whole piece of property, we don't, we're not picking and choosing, and I believe under the ordinance, we can't pick and choose. It has to be, because you've got, you've got one PRD, and then you're going to have a separate boundary for a PRDSHO, and that PRDSHO has to have the same density as the underlying, which is PRDM. And this project doesn't, the concept isn't even close to that, and so that's why I'm against this, and I think we need to, we need to go back. As far as most of the senior family homes, I'm okay with it, and I'm okay with the park, and I'm okay with the trails. What I have a hard time is, is that legally, I'm not sure that we're following the ordinance, and we've got to follow the ordinance, otherwise, anything is, as our city attorney can tell us, if we don't follow the ordinance, then we get accused of making stuff up, and it becomes arbitrary and capricious, and it really just doesn't work, because then we have no standards in the city, because we say, well, it's a good project, let's just build it. And if that's the case, we don't need any zoning ordinance, as we just approve each project as it comes by.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, your thoughts on Commissioner Green's line of thinking with the legality there, following the city code?
Well, yeah, we, if it's being rezoned, so PRD and the senior housing overlay, if the nine-point-eight-seven acres is all being potentially rezoned to that designation, then it needs to all comply. If it's all being rezoned to PRD, and only part of it's going to be senior housing overlay, then, again, everything has to comply with the ordinance. So I think probably first and foremost, we probably ought to just clarify with the applicant what his, the intent of his application was, and, you know, as to which portions are PRD and which portion is senior housing overlay, and then go through the analysis to see that if what he's intending to do does in fact comply with the ordinance or not. I think that's your best course of action.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, any other thoughts? Mr. Gardner?
Can I chime in?
Please.
Now, reading the ordinance, I think where he's applied, the applicant has applied for a PRD on this whole ten-acre piece of property, and submitted a concept and a development plan for the ten-acre piece of property. And so the way I look at it is, this is one project. They're not separate. They're one project, and I don't believe, as I read the code here, and sorry, I didn't have it up in the, in the pre-meeting, says, "The senior housing overlay district applies to standards in addition to the established standards of the underlying zoning district in this title. When the standards found on the underlying and overlaying zoning districts are in conflict, the standards located in the SHO district shall apply." And so I really don't have, I don't think with, contrary to the ordinance, because we're dealing with this as one project. I do believe that it's appropriate to overlay a portion of the project with the senior housing overlay. I don't have, now, but the Planning Commission can certainly disagree with me, but I don't think that, because, and I just want to say this, because we're dealing with the whole ten acres as one piece of property, or one project, the whole thing is called Brinkerhoff Bluffs, just not a portion of it, then I think that it's appropriate to apply the overlay. At least, I don't think, and I'm not an attorney, but I play a pretty good one, but I don't think legally that it is that problem, but of course, the Planning Commission can disagree with me.
Okay, thank you. So, we have some different points of view from city attorney, city planner, Planning Commission. Would any of the commissioners like to chime in and/or feel that we should have the applicant come up and perhaps address some of these issues? Commissioner Luthy?
I just have a question I need some clarification on. So the discussion on the three-point-whatever units per acre, that's the base design, right? The pre-buy-up design, does that exclude the senior housing, or is the senior housing have to, I mean, is that, the whole total is affected by that, so you can't exclude the senior housing? Okay, that's all I need clarification on.
Any other discussion, thoughts, comments?
Well, I'm just, I'm just going to go back to this, I'm going to go back through the ordinance here, and it's very, to me, the ordinance is very specific, because it specifically says in the ordinance, and we're not talking about, I want to make sure that we're clear, and maybe we bring the applicant, you know what, let's do this. I'm going to move that we suspend the rules, have the applicant come up here, explain the intent of the project one more time, and then I'll go through the ordinance.
I would second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous decision to suspend the rules out. Mr. Cannon, would you like to come forward, please, and address any issue that's come up, so that we can ensure that we make the best informed decision possible?
I sure would, and I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you, and it seems like this, I give this pleasure a lot, and I need to apologize for my truancy. I was being a good grandparent, and I'm glad there's not a police officer here, because I broke every speed limit getting here from here. Why, I'm, as you, you all know me really well already, I'm, my grandparents, and I'm sure Mr. Green and I are related somewhere back, my grandparents moved to West Jordan in the thirties, had a farm there on Ninety-first South and Thirteen Hundred West. I've been a business owner in West Jordan and current business owner for almost twenty I am on the Planning Commission in Riverton City, so I can feel your pain when somebody stands up here and wants to change a direction. A lot of, a lot of what we've done in the planning of this, and this is where, we're into this about five months now, and we wanted to do something that the neighborhood, the city, would be proud of. If we're not meeting that, I could justifiably, you know, give my opinion on that. The fact that there was apartments granted to the south, the fact that we have two major power lines running on the northerly boundary of this as well as the east, and we have sewer treatment plant in our backyard, are some of the justification, but what I, what I'd really like to address is the fact that before we even submitted to the city, we had a neighborhood meeting. We invited all the neighbors, we gave them three concept plans, and let them choose what they thought would be the best. Unanimously, we came up with a concept close to what you see here today. We felt like putting in a park, we felt like a dog park, we thought access to Gardiner Village, access to the light rail system would all be a huge benefit. When we talk about high-density, I really don't view this project as high-density. This is a medium-density. Our lots in here all average almost eight thousand square feet. I also want to address price point. The cheapest house in here, the cheapest, and even in the senior housing overlay, is going to be about three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Some of those perimeter houses are probably going to exceed six-hundred-thousand dollars. This is not a high-density, low-income project. There has been a tremendous amount of effort on the staff's part, on engineering, on our part, to come back. We've, since the last meeting, we've reduced the number of units, we've increased the size of the units, we've done what we've been asked. As far as the ordinance in respect to Mr. Green, I feel like somebody from Clue, did you do with the candlestick? To address his concern, you know, I, I can't, I don't know the law. We've worked very, very close in hand with the city administration, which you guys should be very proud of, they're phenomenal, these people, they work so hard. And we felt like we have put in the time to address the ordinance. If we haven't done so, if we are doing something that's illegal or not right based on that ordinance, we'd like to know what that is, because we have hit, in our opinion, what's been asked of us, and I'd be happy to field any concerns or questions. You guys are awesome, and I love the relationship we have, and I don't want to tarnish that, so please fire away.
Thank you. Mr. Cannon, questions for the applicant? Doesn't look like any questions currently.
Okay.
Thanks for being here.
I would recommend, Mr. Chair, that you just verify that which, that the entirety is applied for it to be rezoned as PRD, and that it's only the portions that are multifamily that are the ones that are in the senior housing overlay zone.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Is that, is that your intent with the application, Mr. Cannon?
I believe so. Is that...
Would you like it re-explained again, because I know it gets a little fuzzy with the PRD and the SHO?
I'm great at statistics, I'm not a numbers guy, and I've shared this with you on a number of occasions, and I'm really proud of the fact that we have two other senior housing overlays, smaller ones within the city right now going through. Part, there's ten thousand people a day in the United States turning sixty-five, ninety percent of them do not have a viable option for housing, they're having a hard time downsizing. Both of my parents, for an example, are in their seventies. I plan on buying one of these lots, and buying one across the street from my parents to live in. The fact that we're able to join these two together, the retirement community doesn't necessarily want to be isolated, they would love to have as much a vibrant atmosphere and have a walking, livable community to work in. Another attractive feature, we thought, is the dog park. Eighty percent of the seniors now are making their buying decision based on their pets, so they will have the opportunity to have a yard. These aren't on zero lot lines, and they will be more of a custom-type of product.
Very good, thank you. So, to clarify, could you say that one more time, Mr. Murray, just to ensure we're all on the same page?
Yeah, so my understanding is, from what the applicant just indicated then, is that the entire piece, he's requesting that it be rezoned, that the general plan be changed and it be rezoned to the PRD zone, and that only the portions that show on this conceptual drawing, yeah, the light blue or whatever, the two-family or multifamily dwellings, that only that portion be rezoned to the senior housing overlay district, is that correct?
That is correct.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Quinney?
So I'm not going to steal Commissioner Green's thunder, I am going to jump on it just a little bit, just for clarification. I've been scanning through this, now scanning through the code that he was referring to. I think the big issue we're having, well, one of the big issues, I don't see a concept plan at all for the senior housing, and it specifically says in there that there's got to be a two-car garage, and I'm with Commissioner Green, I don't see how that fits on these lots. Do we have anything that shows, maybe this is for staff, but I don't see anything anywhere that shows us what these houses look like. I see a bunch of concept plans for the single-family units, but nothing says this is what we're going to put as a product up for our twin homes.
Thank you for asking, clarifying that. Commissioner Quinney? In the SHO zone, it is a requirement to have a two-car garage and a maximum of two bedrooms on the main level. That is, that is in the zoning ordinance, and I apologize, we don't have a picture of that yet.
The issue, the issue is it doesn't look like it fits, right? We're looking at these tiny little rectangles that are sitting next to each other, there's nowhere that a garage catches onto these things. So that's what, I think one of the issues, I may be wrong, but I think that's one of the issues we're having, is we can't conceptualize that you're in compliance with the law. It's not that we have a problem with this, because I actually think this is a really great product, what you've got here. I just don't see how it fits, and our job is to make sure that we're legally compliant with the code, and that's what I'm missing, is something that shows me that you're meeting all of these checkboxes that we need checked. I don't have a problem with it, I love this, I think this is great, and the concept is wonderful, but I just don't see how it fits, and it meets the criteria. That's what I'm missing.
We'd be okay with, thank you, we'd be okay with that being a condition of approval, is a two-car garage on every one of those, and I apologize that we don't have.
I think that's implied, because it's part of the code.
Well, it's part of the code, but it all, the other part of the code in the PRD zone is that the garage can't take up more than fifty, fifty percent of the frontage. So if your, if your townhome is seventy-five, if your townhome is forty, you know, thirty feet wide, because it's long and skinny, if your townhome's thirty feet wide and you put a twenty, twenty-foot garage on it, then you, then you've broken the ordinance, because you got to have less than fifty percent on the frontage of a PRD. And so, my problem with the long skinny thing with, and if we went to an alley loaded or something else, maybe it makes more sense, but this one with the garage's face in front, the garage's face in front can't have more than fifty percent of the garage on the frontage, or fifty percent being, and I can't see how it fits.
I love that, I love that idea.
And Commissioner Green, I can't disagree with you there, I think it will be very tight.
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon? Follow-up, Commissioner Green? Okay. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you.
We appreciate the additional information. Thanks for being a good grandfather, too, but drive safely. Commissioner Green?
So I'm going to come back to this, and I'm going to slightly, I'm going to have to slightly disagree with Mr. Gardner. And it, in the ordinance in thirteen-six H2, it specifically says that, it clearly says when the standards found within the underlying and overlaying zone districts are in conflict, the SHO applies. I don't think we have any conflicts here. When I'm talking density, we have no conflicts. Where I'm going to disagree with Mr. Gardner is the fact that the ordinance doesn't say one project. The ordinance says what's in the senior housing overlay and what's in the PRD zone, because then it specifically says, going on into thirteen-six H2, "The SHO district is designated on the zoning map by affixing the suffix SHO in parentheses after the underlying zoning district in which the overlay is located." So it's clear that once we have a PRD zone, we're going to have a PRDSHO, where we have an SHO zone, and that's an SHO zone, and that's going to be different than the project. And even though that might be included in one project, that PRD-SHO zone is going to be designated on the map as a separate PRD-SHO zone. When it gets to the density in 13-6-5, it says the density allowed within the SHO shall be the same as found within the underlying zone. The density of those apart, the density of those townhomes has to be the same density that's allowed in the PRDM. So therefore, whatever acreage we decided to fix, the blue, the purple, the whatever color, the density of those townhomes has to fit the PRD because it's in an SHO zone. And it doesn't say, stretch out and use an open space as part of the same project. It says, use the underlying standards. And we're not using the underlying standards here, and that's why I'm, that's why, I agree with, I agree with Commissioner Quinney. This isn't a bad project. It just doesn't meet the standard of the ordinance. If we put the townhomes in, and they were at the five units per acre, and we have this designated outright, I don't, I'm not going to have a problem with it. I won't have a problem, if we went to alley-loaded, that much better. But when you look at the, and then, just to go on, one other thing. 13-6-H9, the landscaping set aside will be the same as the underlying zone, which by the way, the way I read it's 40% for multifamily, single-family type units like that. It has, you have to have common areas in the SHO. You have to have, you have to have a central gathering area, such as a courtyard or plaza, site furniture installed in open space and recreational areas, including benches, areas of balance and sun shade exposure to take advantage of the changing seasons. It requires those things in the ordinance, and it's not on the concept plan. So the SHO has a couple of things that that would overrule, specifically the courtyard, gathering area, the area where it says that the common and open space is interspersed with the development to allow for easy and convenient access to all the residents. That's going to override the PRD piece, but at the end of the day, the concept plan, even with the SHO, doesn't have, doesn't meet the landscaping designs and concept. And when we say, well, we're going to fix this by map, what's actually in the SHO? We don't know. We're going to shift it 20 feet. We're going to add 30 feet. What are we going to do? I think we need to have a better definition of the FHO or SHO and understand that underneath, whatever goes in the SHO has to meet the same density as the underlying density, which is the PRDM. And unfortunately, the way it's drawn out now, if we did an SHO with this, the density's higher than what's in the PRD, what's in the PRDM. Now, if we want to rework it and change the SHO and do a couple other things, then maybe we get, we get to where we're complying with the ordinance, but I don't think we're in compliance with the ordinance because the SHO has to have the same density as the underlying project and have to meet the same things as the PRDM. And this doesn't do it because we can't, I just don't think we can say, let's use one, you know, let's do one, we're making one project so we can do this SHO and just pigtail or piggyback on the rest of the project to get the, to get our density down. I just don't see that, how that's logical and maybe undone.
And not to be a product of group think, but I concur that the more information we can have, the better. Isn't it 13-5-C-2 that says, if we rezone, we need to concurrently approve the concept development plan? And we, well, at least I don't know if we have enough information to concurrently approve the concept development plan without seeing more of the information that Commissioners Green and Quinney have mentioned. Any thoughts from other commissioners? Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I agree on the garage, the ordinance requiring the garage. I don't know how that could possibly fit a double garage across the front of each of these twin homes. There just is not room to do that and have the livable space that you would need.
If I made my efforts advantage with the plan, it does fit.
Great. Thank you. Pass it around.
Thank you.
So, to clarify, this is a conceptual drawing of what the, of what one of the designs would Looks like more than 50% for the garage front-facing.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is 50%.
Kind of hard to tell from a side-facing conceptual drawing of the house. Commissioner Luthy?
As part of this, do we need to have the actual, I mean, are we talking, because we can't just obliquely say, and part of it will have a senior housing overlay. Do we have like an actual legal description associated with this that we can say, and this portion will have a senior housing overlay? I mean, how do you, how do you recommend something without knowing a specific portion of this that we're recommending?
Great question. Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to know, on the twin homes, what the square footage is. And if we're going to take 50% of the front of the house for a double garage, what is the living area as far as square footage?
Approximately 1,200 per floor.
And that does not include the garage?
Excluding the square footage of the garage.
And you have two bedrooms on the main floor?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sort of to, I guess, bring everything together.
So I was just going to, I was just going to address Commissioner Luthy. I think you hit a question right on the nose. We don't have a, we don't have any sort of legal description attached to any, I mean, the ordinance actually says it's attached to property. That could be up to interpretate, but there is no, there is no definition of the SHO other than the fact that we're saying it's probably the blue area on the map, from what I've seen. Because I had that same question back.
Well, my question is, would you be able to look at a legal description and tell you which portion of the map it is? And so maps are always, well, an engineer, I don't know, I bet you I could throw a legal description, and maybe she could trace it out. But I think this is much more illustrative than a legal description. And we do have a legal description, and the only one that uses that is Mark when he updates the zoning map. And so, I don't see why we're getting hung up on this point. I really don't.
Yeah, if you're confident that that's an accurate depiction of the proposed portion that would be in the SHO, there would have to be, before it is presented to the council, a legal description that would be on the proposed ordinance. At that time, it would need to be included. There's no legal requirement that it be included at this time in your version.
That's what my question was. Is there something actually physically, so if it goes to redesign, where you have to change a little bit here or there, you have to lose a couple of these houses for another open space, or whatever it comes down to, are you now penciled in because of this discussion to just the blue area? Like, you can't suddenly creep into the purple area some more, or the purple area can't creep into the blue area anymore because you've now penciled it in to a hard line of we are in the blue area? That was the whole point of my question. Okay. So the blue area, by the discussion we have now, what City Council would recommend?
And so the point is...
It's part on the blue line.
The point is, of a concept plan, is for the developer to think through this and develop what they want to develop, and then present that to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
It's not meant to be this moving target where, oh, we don't want to do this today. So the City Council will approve this concept plan, and that's how we will derive a preliminary plan and a final plan.
Okay. So when they get into design and they decide that maybe they have to lose a couple of these houses for an open space or whatever else, they can't lose Lot 17. They have to lose it in the blue area. Because that is the area that we designated as the senior housing overlay area. That's all I was trying to understand.
Great. So, let's see. Cutting to the chase, because great discussion. It seems like the concept plan is the major hang-up. If we have enough information since, you know, as mentioned, so it's 13-what, 5-2, where we're concurrently approving a concept development plan if we rezone. So I guess, what are some options? We could forward this saying that, you know, hey, City Council, these are some things that you'd want to look at. These are our hang-ups to make sure that more information on the concept plan is there for City Council, since we're trying to help divest them of having to go through, you know, we're here to make their jobs easier. Or we could continue again, saying that they would need to bring back more information so that then we have a more concrete recommendation to give City Council. Any other options? I mean, obviously, you can approve or deny. I think, you know, even though City Council reads through all these minutes, let's see, we've got about 45 minutes' worth of, you know, typed notes that they would have to get through amid their other agenda items that are quite lengthy. Thoughts? Commissioner Green?
Well, I was going to make a motion.
Let's, Commissioner Luthy, do you have other comments?
I was, I was just going to say that I really like the idea behind it. I lived really close to here just before we moved out west. But I really like the idea of it. The thing we have to remember is that we're just changing the zoning. So if we change the zoning, the senior housing overlay stays. So even if he decides it doesn't pencil out for him and sells it, this kind of a concept would still be linked with this land. And I think it's a good concept for the land.
Could you please say that in the microphone, Commissioner Green?
At some point in time, if it's not actioned on and billed on after the
Two years.
Rezone, the two years.
Two years, it reverts back.
It reverts to the old zoning.
Commissioner Luthy?
So it sounds like that's a win-win. I mean, the old zoning was low density.
We're just a recommending body today, and, you know, there are some issues. There's a lack of some information on this concept. I get that. I really like this plan. But we can direct staff to fix some of these issues in between the time of, you know, a potential motion tonight and the City Council receiving this for approval or denial.
It sounds like everyone, myself included, feels like this is a great opportunity. Certainly, there's not going to be a dearth of baby boomers. And I just, this last year, moved my mom into a legacy apartment-type living. And I'm close to her, but certainly not right across the street, as it were. So I agree, the idea's nice, but we can't put the cart before the horse. We need to ensure that the code is being followed. And it seems like this is a very unique, nebulous case where it's not black and white. And we're taking our best shot at what's best for the community and following the legality. So Commissioner Green, you mentioned that you wanted to tender a motion?
I'm going to make a motion. And it's going to, it's going to take me a minute because I've got to go through a couple of things. The first motion that I am going to make is, based on the information and findings tonight, I move that the Planning Commission forward a negative recommendation to the City Council to amend the general plan, future land use map for 9.87 acres from low-density residential medium on property located at 7653 South 1300 West, based on the PRD concept plan submitted, for the following reasons. One, the senior housing overlay that is part of the general plan, that may be the next motion. So, the concept plan's not sufficient enough for the approval of the general plan. Specifically, for that motion, I'm going to refer to finding A and the findings of fact, that where the finding of fact in the staff report says that the proposed general plan does and does not comply with the city general plan. We have not made any finding of fact either way, and nor do we have a recommendation. The development pattern, let's see, then I...
Yeah, we should probably keep each motion separate.
And I am, and I'm just going through, I'm just going through the findings. There was, there was one other finding that I wanted to put down, and I can't find it. So I'll just leave it with that particular motion at this point in time.
Thank you. Is there a second to Commissioner Green's motion? Seeing none, that fails. What about Commissioner Green, what about, instead of negative, what, and all the commissioners, what about a positive recommendation pending satisfactorily addressing these enumerated items, so that City Council, instead of this voluminous 45 minutes of text trying to get through, they can see, oh, okay. They're okay with this, provided this, 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 you know, bullet state 1, 2, 3, 4 are met. Commissioner Green?
Okay, so let me try again. Based on the findings, staff report, we forward a positive recommendation to the City Council to amend the general land, I'm going to make two different motions here, and we'll go through them. The first motion is, I'm going to just say, based on, I move that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation to the City Council to amend the general plan, future land use map for 9.7 acres from low-density to, actually, that shouldn't be medium-density rent, it should be PRDM, correct?
That's the zone. You're correct.
Oh, we're doing the general land use map as medium-density. Okay. So we'll do it from low-density to medium-density residential on property located at 7653 South 1300 West, based generally on the PRD concept submitted in this report. And then I'll make the modifications in the next motion.
Commissioner Quinney? Second. A motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion to the motion, if I could start with, can you please clarify again for all of us, which motion?
All I'm moving is the motion to make, to amend the general land use plan from low-density to medium-density.
Right.
Generally following the concept plan.
And that's a positive recommendation to the council. Thank you. Getting the word positive in there. Thank you. Other discussion to the motion. Let's please vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Commissioner Green?
Okay, so now we'll get into the one with the SHO zone. Based on the, based on the information and everything else we've got, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the City Council to rezone 9.87 acres from RR5D, rural residential, 20,000-square-foot minimum lot area to PRDM, with a senior housing overlay district as designated on the concept plan at 7653 South 1300 West, with the following additional conditions. Condition one, that the applicant secure the appropriate permission from the property owner. Currently, the application shows that it's the Brinkerhoff, it's actually the Brinkerhoff Trust that owns the property, and you need to have the trustee's approval, not the individuals. Number two, that the concept plan in the SHO be modified to reflect a density that's appropriate with a PRDM zone, and that the density between, is between the 3.1 and 5.5 in the SHO zone. And then three, there's a couple of cleanups in the staff report that we need to talk about, particularly finding A, we probably need to say it probably, that it does. But we'll do, we can do the, the staff can do the cleanup on the report.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion in the motion, may I start with, do we want to specifically mention the exact things that we have trouble with? Case in point, 50% garage front-facing.
That's going to have to meet the ordinance when they come back for the subdivision regardless. If you make the criteria right now, it just... If you make the criteria right now, it just, it will have to meet it.
Okay, I'm just trying to think of helping city council. Okay.
And I wouldn't, I think, I wouldn't lump anymore. The city council will, they'll understand, and so.
Very good, thank you. Other discussion to the motion. Seeing none, I believe this necessitates a roll call vote, is that correct? At least, it's mentioned in our packets on the business item. For the senior, is that for the council? Okay.
Yeah, anything that ends up being an ordinance at the council level, you'd want a roll call vote on here.
Okay. Great, let's vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you for a good discussion to ensure that we do the best for West Jordan, and thank you for your application and for wanting to be with us here. All right. Now that we're all warmed up from business items, we get to go to the public hearings. Item number three on the agenda, Platinum Imports, ninety-thirty-five-south-thirteen-hundred-west, conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales and service, used and restaurant, fast food, limited, CGZC Zone, Winder Real Estate Incorporated. Alex Winder is the applicant. Please feel free to come forward and present your application. Thanks.
Address?
I, we, I think we already have that, right? Yes, please, just so that, yes, that'd be great.
Alex Winder, eleven-sixty-nine west, Corbin Drive, South Jordan, Utah, eight-four-zero-nine-five. I'm just here to answer any questions you guys might have. We've already gone through a couple meanings, so you're probably pretty familiar.
Thank you, good to see you again. I know one question that we have is, certainly, there's a lot of irons in the fire, not all the eggs in one basket. Could you, could you explain me the juggling act a bit of such different industries?
For sure. So, the little history, I'll just recap for you guys. Mr. Carwash bought this building from Platinum Carwash, and they put a deed restriction on the property saying, hey, you can't do any conveyor belt car wash here anymore. So we had to kind of rethink what we could do with this building and repurpose it, so. So yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of why we have this, because we couldn't use half the building, like, I think it's like five thousand square feet, that would just be useless, and then, yeah, so we just had to kind of think outside the box and redesign it. So that's why we have so many things here.
Great, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. It's my understanding that all cars will be parked inside and not outside on the lot?
So that's the plan, so Wayne Niederhauser, who's our neighbor, we have an agreement with him that basically, he doesn't care how many cars we park outside during the day, but at night, he'd like them inside. If we ever decided we wanted to park them outside, he would just want us to fence the whole thing. But with how many things are, that are going on here, the way we have it, we, I mean, we're not gonna park cars outside, there's just not enough room, so.
And will your sales be a lot on internet sales or that type of sale?
Yeah, internet sales, and it's more of a hobby than a, than a business.
Okay, thank you.
Can I adj, can I adj something?
Yes, please, Mr. Green.
The conditions of approval that the planning commission established should be to mitigate some impact, and it's not because it's the will of a neighbor necessarily. And so unless the planning commission could make that somehow less mitigating some impact other than the neighbor doesn't like it, I would discount that and just, you know, you know, I would, I would more say that parking inside lowers police calls because there's less chance of, of on a ten of cars getting broken into, but I wouldn't say it's because a very prominent neighbor doesn't want it, okay?
Great, thank you. And that brings up the question that I had, why don't we have Mr. Winder address it, and then if, we need to get some clarification from city staff. So there are twenty-nine parking spaces required, there are thirty there, but could you please speak to how that affects the ratio when the cars that you have would be parked outside during the day and then brought inside at night?
Um, that's a good question. I, I really don't plan on parking any cars outside. The only reason they would be outside is because we have the detail shop, and we will loan them to people that come in to get their cars detailed. So it might be parked out there while someone's switching cars, but they're not gonna be out there advertised.
Okay, thank you. And that was taken into consideration with the staff report, too, so just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Winder? All right, we'll save some time for you after the public comment section, if there's anything that you'd like to address. Thank you. And Mr. Page, you have this item for the city?
Yes, we've met with the applicant a number of times and long with some city staff to address the flow of traffic through the site, and also if we have adequate parking with the multiple different uses that we have. My best assessment is that twenty-nine parking stalls are needed. The latest parking plan is showing thirty parking stalls. We have received positive comments from the fire department and also city engineering about the parking and the flow of the traffic through the area. There was a previous proposal, for instance, of having some parking where it would abut the gas station on the northwest portion of this property, but that has since been changed. So I just mentioned that, that it's been a dynamic process and going back and forth with the applicant and city staff to see how we can best utilize this property and, and not try to cram too much into one space. I echo the comments of, of our city planner Larry Gardner, that we need to be careful to try to mitigate any reasonably potential conflicts of, of use when there's so many different uses on this property. We've tried to do that as best we can with parking, but maybe there would be any conflict of use with perhaps any noise or odor or traffic. The current landscaping that's on the site is acceptable for the conditional uses as determined by the city planner. So staff has just recommended the following conditions of approval. We don't necessarily need to have up to two vehicles for sale to be parked outside, but we just kind of threw that out there, that that could be a possibility, you know, in the chance that somebody is waiting for their car to be detailed and they have another car outside, and as long as they can meet the parking requirements that are needed for all the other uses.
Great, thank you. And then somewhat similar to the conundrum we had in the last item, that the business item, we have administrative items here, but then we also have conditional use permits necessitated for approval by the commission, which I guess that's motor vehicle, restaurant, and fast food, correct? And then everything else is administrative. Do we need to do any other separation of those two?
No, that the code required a public hearing for, if it be administrative conditional permit or just a conditionally split for the planning commission. So we're, we're bringing both of the conditional use permits before the planning commission in one public hearing.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to clarify, appreciate that. Questions for staff? Commissioner Green?
I just want to clarify, the only thing we're doing, the conditional, the way I read this, we're doing the conditional use permits for the motor vehicle sales and the fast food, correct?
Correct.
So it, because there's this one map, does the detail shop have to have a conditional use permit? Clearly, the printing office, the detail office, the sign office, they don't. Are we just doing two conditional use permits?
The, the detail shop, and correct me, Alex, but my understanding is that detail shop is just for kind of the selling of the vehicles that you're to detail those up with the sale of the, of the cars that are offered. Yes, please.
So the detail shop's actually kind of, it's a separate business, but we're gonna kind of point off each other with the car dealership, so. The hope is people will come get their car detailed and then take one of our cars as a, for a test drive while their car's getting cleaned, and then it's kind of a service-added thing for them, so they don't have to sit and wait. But I don't think, I don't think the detail shop is a conditional use, because it's hard to, we already have a business license for it.
One of the challenges that we've found is that the definitions in the code sometimes don't always meet up with the definitions in each zone that are conditional or permitted. So it's, at least I've tried to match them up the best I can.
So, so we're, are we, so really, the conditional use permit is for the, the one part of the building for the motor vehicle sales? I guess the question is, once, once we have, once we do a conditional use permit on the land, then that, any, any future owner, assuming that Mr. Winter gets tired of selling his Outies, and sells the property, it would have a fast-food ability or a motor vehicle sales because we've already done the conditional use for those two.
Correct.
And then everything else that's permitted, is permitted. Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what we're doing.
If we can just reasonably anticipate any possible conflicts in the future with these uses that could possibly occur, that's why we, there's a conditional use permit that we can, we can try to identify what is reasonable.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll open this up to the public if you would like to speak on this item. Now is the public hearing, feel free to come forward.
Me again, Gary Cannon. I am one of the property owners to the direct east of this project, in the, in the office park, and Mr. Winder was gracious enough to, when they first made an offer on the property, to ask for some of the property owner's input as to what we felt like would work and be an asset and a benefit to the office park and, and there. And, and one of the things that Senator Niederhauser said was, or Commissioner McCann was supposed to say, just how, we need more food place here. I don't, I don't think that they, in their beginning, were open to that, but they have made some progress in doing that, because we do need a place other than McDonald's to eat on that corner, because it is.
They have tornadoes at the gas station.
Yeah, so, anyway, we're, we're, we're good neighbors, and they're good people, and being a neighbor there, we're, we've been strongly in support of what they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
Yes, my name's Cam Randle, I have a little bias. They actually, when I knew Alex and his partner Rob, I'm the owner of Sublime Sandwiches, which is the potential sandwich shop. Gluten-free options, sublime, comes from my favorite poem, "Make your life sublime, leave behind new footprints on the sands of time." It's a long fellow, sorry. Hope that's not in the minutes. Anyway, but they came to Riverton, to me, and approached me about this potential location, and I was very hesitant at first to just pack everything up at Riverton and move it to West Jordan. But coming there and seeing the vibe that goes on in this area, as he's, as the last speaker just mentioned, the potential I see for us to expand, not just to deliver good sublime sandwiches, but, sorry, I'll keep saying that. But we have gluten-free options, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of things, you know, that, that we feel like we can provide, donuts, coffee, et cetera. We're having a little zone, a retro zone built upstairs, eighties video games and so forth, but it's also got a stage, so Friday night, we'll call it beat night, so it'll have open mic night for poetry jams or whatever, just so people can enjoy some donuts, coffee, desserts that we make Saturday. I do signs, I also own the sign shop, that was also something that they wanted me to come do. They wanted to bring me from Riverton with the sign shop, too. And the whole point of that was to, to kind of be one family, one community. I do signs for CJ Jones, who manages fifty different kind of cool jazz, soft music bands, and so that was another idea, Saturday nights could be kind of a, a nice music night there as well, so. Anyway, they, they talked me into it, and, and after looking over the plans and everything with them, I mean, that's the whole reason we agreed to, to potentially move here from, and pack everything up and make, and have that expensive, because we saw the, not just the benefit of coming to a place that might need us, but of the benefit that we might need this area as well, so, anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you. Is that Sublime Signs? Is that gonna be the name, or?
So it's actually a franchise called Signorama, although we are switching a little bit to South Valley Signs primarily because we're not big on franchises and we're all locally owned, and so we're potentially getting out of the franchise market and just switching over to South Valley Signs and doing the car wraps and, and other sign-making there as far as banners, billboards, whatever, you know, that's kind of what we say, we do banners and billboards, so.
Okay, thank you. That brings more cohesion to understanding of what exactly sign shop means, so appreciate that. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing no further comment, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to discussion for the planning commission. Commissioner Quinney?
I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion on this.
Please.
I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permits for motor vehicle sales and service used and restaurant and fast food limited, located ninety-thirty-five-south-thirteen-hundred-west in the CG zone, subject to the conditions listed on page two of the staff report.
Commissioner England?
I second that.
A motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner England. Do we have any discussion to that motion? Commissioner Luthy?
I agree, we need more food in that area.
Thank you.
You must work there someplace.
What we see there on Saturday nights?
Having some Aggie ice cream, absolutely.
If you play an instrument, that'd be, that'd be good, too.
I have a band for you, too. Not mine, but I have a band for you.
Any other discussion to the motion? Let's please vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Best wishes with your plethora of business ventures in that area. Thank you.
See you next month.
And a special welcome to the scouts who have joined us this evening. Thanks for coming out and seeing how that public process works. Next item of business, JT Steel Expansion, ninety-five-fifty-south Holly Park Road. Conditional use permit for metalwork operations in the drinking water source protection overlay zone in an M1 zone. JT Steel is the applicant. And do we have a name for the, I apologize, please come forward. I just don't know your name, or I can call you by name. Your name's who you are, so I want to respect your name. Please mention your name and address.
I'm Jeremy Arnold. I'm representing JT Steel, ninety-five-fifty-south Holly Park Road.
Great, thank you. Please present your application.
Basically, we're just, we're applying for our expansion, just to increase our production of our shop. So I'm just here if you guys have any questions about it.
Questions on the expansion? Nothing right now. We'll see if we have any further question after the public comment section. Thank you. And we have Mr. Forsyth addressing this issue.
Yes, thank you, Jeremy. So as the applicant said, JT Steel is just expanding their warehouse to the north and then their office space in front. And so as part of that, we just require that certain aspects, particularly health, safety, and welfare, be brought up to code. And so as part of this expansion and an expansion of the use, since this was involving metalwork, this was one of the uses listed in the drinking water source protection overlay ordinance that requires a conditional use permit, so that's essentially why we're reviewing it today. So this, this site's just located on the corner of Holly Park Road and Wells Park Road. They're right pretty much on the perimeter of a three-year time of travel. They're right pretty much on the perimeter of a three year time of travel zone, meaning that if the groundwater were contaminated, it would take about three years to reach the aquifer, which is just up the road on the fire station property. So that distance is about fourteen hundred feet, give or take, so just to give you an idea. So as you can see here, this is kind of a diagram of where those chemicals will be stored. You can see it's really a pretty small area. There's really not a whole lot of chemicals that they'll be using. Most of those chemicals are just going to be paint primer with smaller amounts in motor oil and hydraulic oil for vehicles and so forth. So all these chemicals, they'll be storing fairly new drums. They're, they're used pretty much in regular circulation, so there's really probably not going to be chemicals, or at least the same chemicals stored there for a long period of time. And then other measures that they've agreed to take are putting those in drain reservoirs or storage cabinets as sort of a secondary containment measure. So as I said before, they, they'll be storing everything inside the building. Nothing's going to be stored outside. So we really don't anticipate any penetration into the groundwater or any major systems, so. So based on these findings, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for JT Steel.
Great, thank you, Mr. Forsyth. So let's see, they've got sixty-one employees and it's only 2.5% of the storage space they're using. Is that with the expansion?
Roughly, that's, yeah, but it's kind of an estimate, but yeah.
Yeah, that's, it's nice to have a dedicated area and safe away from so many employees. Any questions for staff? All right, thank you. Well, let's open this up to the public. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Last call, anyone at all? We'll close the public comments section. Thoughts, commissioners? Commissioner Luthy.
Looks like the conditions of approval are pretty airtight. I mean, they, they cover everything. I think that I'm ready to make a motion if.
Please do.
Okay. Based on the information findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for the JT Steel Expansion. CUP for steel fabrication and chemical storage within the drinking water source protection overlay on the property located at 9550 South Hawley Park Road, subject to conditions of the approved list on page two of the staff report.
Commissioner Hanson. A motion by Commissioner Luthy and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Do we have any discussion to that motion? No discussion? Let's please vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thanks for continuing to do business in West Jordan. Good luck with the expansion. Last item of business tonight for a public hearing is, as I get to it here. Back to it, one moment. All right, item number five, Airborne Sports LLC, 7453 South Plaza Center Drive, conditional use permit for recreation and entertainment indoor in an SC3 ZZ Zone. Airborne Sports LLC, Bentley Williams is the applicant. Present this evening? Come on down. You're the next contestant. Now present your application.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all. For those of you unfamiliar with Airborne, we are a family entertainment business. Largely providing entertainment within the trampoline park industry. We also do obstacle courses and escape rooms and we have been wanting to find a space within West Jordan for quite some time and, and have finally found one, so we're hoping that with your consent, we can, we can work towards building out space here in Jordan Landing and here to answer any questions that you all might have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Williams. Questions for the applicant? All right, if anything comes up later with the amount of public that are here, we'll let you come back up and talk. So, Mr. Forsyth, you have this item as well?
Yes, thank you. So as you can kind of see here on the map, they're, the Airborne Sports is going to be located in Jordan Landing. So, so this building here is the, the old Sears building. They'll be situated kind of in the middle, so Sears will be taking this space on the north. Airborne Sports will be in the center and then Burlington Coat Factory will be on the south end. So all of Jordan Landing is zoned SC3, which is a regional commercial zone and trampoline parks by code are defined as a recreation and entertainment indoor, which requires a conditional use permit in that zone, so that's why that's being reviewed.
Great, thank you, Mr. Forsyth. Any questions for staff? All right, well, let's open this up to the public. If anyone would like to jump up and say anything, see what I did there? See, see, see what I did? Thank you. All right. Officer, anything you'd like to say? Very good, sir. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your service. All right, we will close the public comments section. Commissioner Luthy.
I'm super excited about this. I harp often that we don't have enough amenities in West Jordan and I think this is a great addition to West Jordan. So I'm super excited, so I'd like to make a motion on this one as well. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for Airborne Sports, located at 7453 South Plaza Center Drive in an SC3 ZZ Zone, subject to the conditions of approval listed on page two of the staff report.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Luthy, a second by Commissioner Hanson, and discussion, please, commencing with Commissioner Green.
I'm waiting to see thirty-seven thousand square feet of trampolines.
Other, other discussion? Let's see, we had a, let's see, let's vote then, please. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thanks for doing business in West Jordan. Best wishes to you. And we have a discussion item on small wireless facilities. Which staff member is addressing that this evening?
I'll talk about it and Duncan can fill in. I think I brought this up at the meeting, the, but the joint meeting last week, but a few of you weren't able to be there. The state of Utah, I believe Duncan, it was right at the end of the session, legislative session, in their benevolence chose to enforce what they call the small cells wireless bill. And what that has basically done is it allows now wireless carriers to establish cellphone antennas in the public right of way. Before, all towers and cellphone antennas, as you're aware, had to be on private property. Now there will be a small cell antenna and it can be several hundred of them can be located in the public right of way. Public right of way for as long as I can remember has been the bastion of cities and municipalities and the publics to use. You know, the, the city has very narrow areas where they put water and sewer lines and, and many water and sewer lines, storm sewer, and depending on the road, it can take up nearly all of the public right of way. Well now, and I feel for Nate and the engineering department because now they have another issue to deal with and that's a small cell antenna. And so it, it is a huge issue. And so Duncan and the attorney's department, attorney's department has done is they've got together, what was there, how many were the meeting, there was probably nine or ten municipalities represented, including UDOT at a meeting that Duncan hosted, trying collectively for all the cities in the West Edge Front to get their arms around this mandate that's been shoved down on the cities. You know, most cities were working very well, talking to wireless carriers and going at their own pace. However, the state of Utah has chosen to mandate this now and, and if we don't craft some type of ordinance, then the city will have absolutely, you know, say, now there's some flexibility, the city will be given design standards that they can come up with. From the group we met with today, there were, I think Duncan will pretty much leave that is up to each municipality for the design standards. But you know, you know, the rest of it's pretty much, it's probably the most complete zoning ordinance in a statute that, that has been. Now Duncan, I think there was some talk of taking this out of a land use category and making this more of a, an encroachment thing, but I don't know. Maybe you want to talk about that or maybe that's just talk at this point and so.
Yeah, the, there's pros and cons to putting the actual design guideline portion in your land use titles, which are titles twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen. I think currently right now, Mark Forsyth, correct me if I'm wrong, but everything's dealing with cell towers is currently in our main zoning ordinance, title thirteen, right?
That's correct.
And, but the, the challenge is if we put all of the design guidelines in addition to the regular parts of the ordinance in title thirteen, then they would be difficult to change and the, the challenge we have is that we have to be very responsive to what's going on because it's all happening very quickly. And, and of course, any standard, any land use related standard that we adopt has to have a public hearing at the planning commission level, has to go to the council level and has to be passed by ordinance. Because the current land use law is that any, any land use regulation has to be passed by ordinance in front of the council unless it's purely just a financial or fee related issue. So that's the only part that we're still kind of looking at. Draper is probably one of the cities that's the best in adopting the new standards that are required by state law. Midvale is one of the ones that seems to be the most proactive in looking at the actual design guideline portion as opposed to the procedural portion. But the main thing we're looking at is how do we best react to, how do we process the applications? We anticipate we'll have dozens of applications over a short period of time, starting sometime in the near future. And one of the positive parts of the law is we are allowed a lot of flexibility, especially when it comes to design guidelines, as long as we have them in place before the applications come in. We have some flexibility since we're starting to discuss this ordinance tonight under the pending ordinance or pending regulation doctrine that since we've, are beginning the process officially tonight at an open meeting, we may be able to retroactively apply back regulations that we pass over the next couple of months, even though the applications have, maybe are going to come in before we finish this process. But bottom line is we want to finish this process very quickly and so we will try to at either the next meeting or as soon thereafter as possible, get a proposed ordinance in front of you as a planning commission so that we can react to these applications before we come in. It is a little problematic though, what Larry just mentioned, that it's the first time that I know of that we've been required or forced by law to put anything, you know, specific things into our public rights of way, specific types of infrastructure that's not purely public related, you know. Most of the time what we're putting in our public rights of way are public municipal type services, water, sewer, storm drain and so forth. Or it's, if we're not directly providing those municipal services, it's some other company that still is delivering or entity that's delivering a municipal type service. These telecommunications companies are private companies and yet they're being allowed by state law to place these items in our our public right of way. It's, it's kind of curious to me, but I, I do get it on the level of, on a pure service level, it makes sense because our residents buy their actions are requiring the need for these services, albeit they're not in the nature of regular municipal services like sewer and water, but, but for us getting those, purchasing and using the devices which require the need for this infrastructure, then, then there wouldn't be this issue before us. So, so I am cognizant of the fact, I think we all are, that we do need the infrastructure to support the devices we're using. To me personally, and this is just philosophical maybe, if, if not legal, but, but I, I just personally, and it doesn't matter, the law is what the law is until someone challenges it maybe in the courts, but, but to me philosophically, it doesn't make a lot of sense that private companies, telecommunications companies be allowed to use our public property, which we manage on behalf of residents, essentially without our consent. I know it's a little different. I mean, private property owners, of course, we can't take their property without their consent. Unless, you know, subject to courts reviewing the process and being paid, being paid for market value according to the constitution, but to me, it still seems strange that, that the legislature is picking winners and losers and requiring that, that public entities be, or be forced to use their property for the purposes of individual private companies. To me, it's, it's a, just from being a, the student of the constitution, it just doesn't seem right to me. Even if it's technically not unconstitutional, I think it's a dangerous line to, to potentially cross. Because like I say, that even though it is public, there's a hundred and fifteen thousand people in the city that collectively own those public rights of way and to be forced by the legislature to allow these private telecommunications companies to use their right of way, to me, it smacks of unconstitutionality or it just doesn't pass the smell test. That, having said that, until, like I say, such time that, that something is challenged in the courts, and I'm not saying that, that we're going to do that, I'm just raising the issue. Until that time, we will follow the state law and we will do our best to comply and, and provide the, the services in the, in the best possible way. And use by adapting an ordinance, the flexibility of at least a good process for processing applications and then secondarily as some design guidelines to at least, make it fair to all parties and to make it in the best interest functionally and perhaps aesthetically for the community as well. So. Anyway, I just wanted to kind of paint a picture of you. It is what it is. It's happened. It's law. We're going to comply. But I wanted you to just kind of get a feel for, for what's happening, so. And we're just trying to work with, like I say, UDOT, other neighboring municipalities. We even had St. George involved today. There's cities across the state that obviously are all going to have to comply with this, with this law, so. And, and I think part of the process, part of the thought pattern is to, is as much as possible if we, there's, there's power and uniformity and so if a lot of, if we can come up with similar methodologies, if not templates for our ordinances and design guidelines, at least have least have similar issues that we're facing in a similar way, then we get organizations like the League of Cities and Towns that back us up, we back up each other, and I think the legislature is less inclined to pass any additional legislation if we're, quote, "taking care of it," the issue ourselves. So I don't mean to be negative in any way towards telecommunications companies, I think they provide a great service, I think many of the companies are going to be very, very willing to work with us. I am, and I'm not going to say their name, a little concerned about one telecommunications company that's been overly aggressive during this process, but I hope that that aggressive behavior will change and that we can actually work together for the best interest of the public. That's all I've got to say on it, so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Murray. Commissioner Luthy?
What exactly are they asking for? Are they just wanting to piggyback on Rocky Mountain Power poles? Are they wanting a whole separate new pole? I mean, what are we talking here?
Well, that's the curious thing. If I understand the legislation correctly, and I don't know everything about it at this juncture, but Rocky Mountain Power appears to be exempted from the statute. We're not talking about Rocky Mountain Power poles, we're talking about poles that the city itself owns, or that UDOT owns.
So if you have a light pole, they could put it on the light pole?
Yeah, well, if there's poles that the city owns of any variety, then they basically...
You mean what, like your sign outside that is on a pole could be...
There are certain city lights, if I understand correctly, where the city may own them, I'm not sure, there's different classifications of lights. In some instances, Rocky Mountain Power owns that light pole, in some instances, the city does, but there are a variety of different poles that the city owns. Or we're also talking about the placement of additional poles in the city right of way. That's, I think, probably one of the main issues we're talking about. Now granted, a lot of the technology has advanced to the point where a lot of these micro cell pieces of infrastructure are smaller, they're easily attached to poles that don't show up, they're a little, not as noticeable, they're more stealthy, the technology, like I say, is better in that regard. But, yeah, we're talking about the placement of those onto city owned poles and/or new poles in city right of way. And like I say, that's where the design standards come in, as we have some flexibility on which, you know...
I mean, you can say all your city light poles are not going to suddenly become a cell tower.
Well, and maybe I'll defer a little bit back to Larry on some of that as far as the actual placement on the poles.
Well, the poles have to meet a certain standard, you know, because most of the light poles are not going to be constructed to hold a light and a cell tower.
And I imagine they have to have a certain height as well?
Well, they can go up to fifty feet.
Oh, wow.
Under the state code, and so there's nothing small about them if they get fifty feet.
But they're not piggybacking onto Rocky Mountain?
No, they can't, they're actually prohibited from going on a Rocky Mountain owned pole, and so, like Duncan said, if there's a light pole that they can say is engineered will hold, or if the city comes up with the design standards, then that is the one area where we can enforce a little bit of our will. We can make them actually replace the pole with one that will hold the light and the cell tower. Another option is putting them on top of the traffic signal poles and that, but they'll all have to meet scrutiny through proper engineering, you know, make sure that they'll handle the light.
Are they going to be limited out of like neighborhoods? Like, is this going to be something you can say is done?
No, any right of way that's less than fifty feet in width, they can't go, and so...
Okay, so that does eliminate some of it right there.
Very little in West Jordan, but most are...
Yeah, most of the residential streets, right Larry, they won't be able to place these towers in, as a matter of right.
Anyway, I'll leave it there, so, but it's going to be, it's going to be interesting.
Yeah, they won't be as big and bulky as like the cell phone towers on elementary schools, like at Jordan Hills Elementary, so hopefully it'll be less now.
These are purely meant to, these are purely meant to be, and my gut feeling where they'll start in West Jordan is Jordan Landing, because there's a high concentration of cell phone use going on at that time. You know, even either in the theater, people are shopping, or the trampoline park waiting, you know, everybody's on their phone, using internet, and it's causing the larger towers to slow way down, or they're being overloaded because, and you know, and these cell phone companies, they're very, very sophisticated, and they know where the problem areas are. And shopping, you know, Jordan Landing, the district, those areas are really high use, and so that's my gut feeling where they'll start, not so much the residential areas, but...
And I don't mean to paint too bleak a picture, because like I say, the, I think the vast majority of the telecommunications or cell companies are going to really want to work with us. And part of the methodology is going to be, is that just like we have franchise agreements for infrastructure below the ground, we're going to end up with master lease agreements for this infrastructure, for the most part is above ground, unless there's connecting fiber optic, which is subject to a franchise agreement. But everything above ground, the actual micro cell towers themselves, will have master lease agreements, one master lease agreement with each telecommunications company. I really believe most of these companies will be very reasonable and will be able to work out the placement of these and to, and like Larry just mentioned, that when it comes to our main commercial areas, it's going to be a huge benefit, because it's going to provide people with the, you know, with the coverage that they need, and it's going to enhance people's desire to use and frequent those commercial places that now, you know, maybe they've got maximum bars at instead of minimum bars, so that's the good part about it, so.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. You call them small cell, I know on the ones that are now allowed on private property, you can have multiple users. You may have AT&amp;T, Verizon, as long as they're separated by a certain distance. Will these be the same way? Will they be able to have multiple users, or will they be individually owned?
They'll be individually owned. The statute says they can co-locate, but the city cannot mandate, make them co-locate. Most of them want to own their own, you know, there's no spacing requirement that we can enforce, so, no. So there could be multiple poles with multiple different companies in one area.
And I don't know what the FAA requires as far as height, they can go to fifty feet.
Fifty feet's not in, even in, close to their...
Yeah, what they would require. Thank you.
And there might be some things we can do to provide incentives for them to not use the maximum fifty-foot requirement. We can't require that they go lower than fifty feet, but we can, you know, make every effort to create some incentives that they maybe go to thirty-five feet or below, so. But yeah, like Larry mentioned, we can neither prohibit nor require that they co-locate, so again, a lot of our power comes down to the design guidelines and creating incentives so that we don't proliferate too many different poles and so forth. That's the biggest risk I see, is the proliferation of too many poles, but hopefully we can work around that, so.
And will there be public input in that? You know, you mentioned design, does that go before, like a design review committee, or is there going to be a citizen commission?
It'll probably just be a certain city staff member, maybe somebody like Mark Forsyth over there or something like that, so. Whoever Larry Gardner's city planner designates, I guess, it'll probably be a staff person.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hatch?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Who, as far as, does the provider maintain these, or does the city maintain them?
No, they'd be, the provider maintains it, and they do pay the city a fee every year, yeah.
And then as far as if a provider goes out of business and the pole is left, does the city...
No, there's a provision in the statute that requires that they be removed.
And if there's five providers that want one spot, is there an application process, or how do we determine who goes there?
That's what Duncan's working on, is the application process right now, so.
Right, because really, there's, like I say, the main part of the ordinance is just the application process itself. And then the second part of the ordinance, real briefly, will allow staff or someone to generate the engineering design guidelines, which would be the second issue that we want to look at, so. And I think what the city engineer will be most concerned about is that how do we manage this in our public right of way in addition to everything else? So that's an integral part of the application process is, and maybe we want to look broader than just this, but we already have an application process, I think, for placing something in the public right of way, we're just going to be more specific, how do these telecommunications, how does this telecommunications infrastructure, in particular these micro cell towers, how do they fit in with everybody else, everything else that we're throwing in this limited space? But the biggest issue under both federal and state laws, we have to treat everybody the same, whatever standards we come up with have to equally apply to any of these telecommunications companies.
Thank you.
Great, any other discussion for this evening? We appreciate your time and keeping us informed, thanks for working together, thanks for communicating. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Sound moved.
Any opposition? We stand adjourned, thank you.